You have to turn it off, I already hit start. Turn that off, copyright.
You did?
Yep, already hit start.
Didn't know that.
Six o'clock, time to start. Get ready for study.
What do you want to drink?
Oh, just like a monster.
Wow, you look handsome.
Oh, I love that.
Or a monster, monster?
Monster?
Yeah, you want anything to drink?
Mmm, better not. You can get a bottle of water though, if you're at the store.
She refuses to drink our water.
No, like a bottle.
We have water.
She won't drink our water.
Fine.
You got like a really skinny little one.
No, a big one.
A tiny little one.
Let's say I texted you two Venmo requests me for my sandwich earlier.
Oh, I don't have Venmo, and don't sweat it, it's like five bucks.
I'll Venmo you for five dollars.
Don't pay her.
I'll Venmo you, you'll pay me.
You'll pay me one way or the other, bitch. Bitch.
This should feel like paradise. Six o'clock, we gotta get started, gotta start this party.
I'm going.
Copyright. Woo.
Woo.
Paradise. So, we made it to the EX raid, Cory didn't.
Sucker.
I legit actually don't know if she legit did.
I think she probably did.
She, there were enough people that like rolled up at the YI. Paradise. Not what I meant to click on, let's see. Well, says something shitty about Cory and laughed in the.
Oh Cory.
I don't think Cory made it to the, to the X raid. Ha, ha. Can I take a selfie with your chrysalia though, please?
Oh, hot hell.
I'll be here, I just drank two daisies, monster, an accident, no you'll be fine, MRG. Hi Oz, how are you today? Welcome.
Paradise.
Paradise. Alright, we're back for round two, we had to take a break in the middle to go catch a deoxys, which I did, catch a great one. We also went to catch a chrysalia. Hold on, get my hair in shot. Perfect.
You know what else I caught though?
This. That deox, what are you, hold it over to there. I'm not doing two, I'm just doing one.
Why you got a creep on me man?
Um, so we both caught deoxys defense, and then I didn't get a chrysalia, I'm really sad about it, but it's okay. Paradise. I caught me two foot gator in the driveway. You caught a two foot gator in your own ass driveway, that's nuts Oz. I caught me two foot gator in the driveway. You caught a two foot gator in your own ass driveway, that's nuts Oz.
A two foot gator in your driveway? What the hell? A two foot gator in your driveway? What the hell?
Two feet isn't that big. Two feet isn't that big.
That's huge. That's like, so it's a baby gator. That's huge. That's like, so it's a baby gator.
This big? This big?
I don't know. I don't know.
You like that? You like that?
Y'all like that? Y'all like that?
I love it. I love it. Phew, round two, gotta get focus mode back on, that's the hardest part, it's like. Phew, round two, gotta get focus mode back on, that's the hardest part, it's like.
I know, I know. I know, I know.
We left, we dinked around. We left, we dinked around. Number nine, two hours. Number nine, two hours. I'm updating the thumbnail, that's what I'm doing, no I'm not, I'm re-sizing the thumbnail, that's what I'm doing. I'm updating the thumbnail, that's what I'm doing, no I'm not, I'm re-sizing the thumbnail, that's what I'm doing. What you guys accomplished for the two hour break, anything fun done? What you guys accomplished for the two hour break, anything fun done?
Fun done. Fun done.
Or just boring work stuff? Or just boring work stuff?
Well, Sunday, no one's working. Well, Sunday, no one's working.
Well, Sunday, that's actually true at all. People are working on Sunday. Well, Sunday, that's actually true at all. People are working on Sunday. Keyhole test two. Keyhole test two. Man, you're just poking through those things, aren't you? Man, you're just poking through those things, aren't you?
Yep. Yep. Sure am. Sure am.
I took over a glass of water. I took over a glass of water.
Um, wait a second, did I already do this one? Um, wait a second, did I already do this one? I believe I did. I believe I did.
I'll do it again. I'll do it again.
We look alike right there a lot. We look alike right there a lot. Don't you think so? Don't you think so?
Mm-hmm, our noses look the same. Mm-hmm, our noses look the same.
Yeah, if mine, if only mine wasn't so crooked, we would look a lot more alike. Yeah, if mine, if only mine wasn't so crooked, we would look a lot more alike. Our teeth look a lot alike too. Our teeth look a lot alike too. I think just like the general shape of our face is similar. I think just like the general shape of our face is similar.
We also smell the same. We also smell the same.
Same, same, same mouth. It's this, it's the mouth and then the this, that's just the same. Smell, same, same mouth. It's this, it's the mouth and then the this, that's just the same.
That whole like triangle of square sameness, yeah. That whole like triangle of square sameness, yeah.
Yeah, like from here to here, to here to here. Yeah, like from here to here, to here to here. You know what, I got some vanilla coke. You know what, I got some vanilla coke.
What? What?
Do the chap, hold up right now. Do the chap, hold up right now. Uh, do you want me to? Uh, do you want me to?
Yeah, well I just, I had just exited my nap because I'm working on the thumbnail and I screamed right out of space and I could throw a button. Yeah, well I just, I had just exited my nap because I'm working on the thumbnail and I screamed right out of space and I could throw a button.
Okay, I can do that for you. Okay, I can do that for you.
There we go. There we go. Here we go, study session part two of the day, two more hours. Here we go, study session part two of the day, two more hours. Let's try to write her face now. Let's try to write her face now. Uh, you killed two Eldians on Warframe. Uh, you killed two Eldians on Warframe. Edel, Edelons. Good for you. Edel, Edelons. Good for you. Teeth twinning. Okay, thumbnail's good, timer's good. Teeth twinning. Okay, thumbnail's good, timer's good. Hair's remotely fine. Hair's remotely fine. That'll do. That'll do. Excuse me. Excuse me. Alright, and I'm starting. Alright, and I'm starting. Session number one. Session number one.
What is that, do you add sound effects? What is that, do you add sound effects?
I just looked up a soothing ocean with you. I just looked up a soothing ocean with you. Soothing ocean with you. Soothing ocean with you. Well, I've got it. Well, I've got it. Do you have any more of these pens? I don't even have, I just haven't brought them yet, they're my favorite pens.
Yeah, sure.
Do you have any work pens, are we new work there this game?
They don't make these kinds of pens anymore. They stopped carrying those pens, they stopped carrying these pens. I knew company has crappy, because they're like two fifty a pen. It's like a pretty big marketing budget for those kinds of pens.
They're so good pens though.
I know, I know, most of us start buying our own. I know, I know. Most of them start buying around. Do they even sell like what is this? It's a BIC.
Just a fat BIC. I could put a Po-Can on it.
Oh my gosh, why they're like tax write-offs.
Yes, obviously.
Fat gel pen.
Mostly just because I could give away.
Get their the refills for them. Oh wait, is that? Look at that right there.
These are pens you can refill?
I just wrote. BIC fat gel pen.
Guess you can refill all pens technically. Yeah, this puppy's running dry. Yeah, I need a fat BIC refill please.
Fat BIC refill?
A big fat refill.
Sick. Just sounds wrong. You can find it from like, I'm gonna go to Amazon. Amazon's easy.
Of course it's a Kinecolegram Y.
Would I not assume that? Fat pen refill. Gel, I have to write gel. Fat gel.
Yes. Non-spawn and a negative a hundo's bam. Would be spot.
What up?
I feel like it's easy. Still fast for a face change.
Is that a? Pilot G two Dr. Grip gel. I have to look it up. Oh no, that's not the right one. BIC intensity click gel. Okay, that's what it is. Really? I'm on this train and I am not getting off until I figure out what I need. BIC intensity click gel. Refills, found them. Big gel refills, Fitz velocity gel, Pro Plus gel, Reaction gel. I'm not sure why they use the word gel. That to me seems odd but. That's the pen, alright. And that's the refill pack that comes on it. Blue or black? Ooh sick. This must be black.
Well, you wanted to buy tags.
Oh, yeah, I gotta do that. I'm gonna add like three of these. Cause honestly, I do throw these pens away and I should not, like I should keep them. And just you get the refill.
Well, three refills is three dollars. It's not that big of a deal.
Yeah. Oh, sickening. Oh, it says what I need to do refill it right there. So, ah, I'm such a dummy.
That's why I asked outlaw, is this a pen that refills? Do you refill pens? Like.
Did you say that?
I did, but the first time you said and then I was like, wait, the hell? Of course you do. I've taken pens apart since I was zero years old.
Zero years.
Cause I like the springs inside. I always used to fuck with the springs. I used to take the springs out and then be like, where does my pen work?
Got a real engineer on our hands.
Yeah, it do define real an engineer in that sense. What do you search for? DS five hundred eight eight.
I think we try to get.
Seventeen point oh eight.
Five hundred, starting?
Eight eight. Seventeen point oh eight K O seven.
No.
We'll Google that instead.
Yes.
K S five hundred eight eight seventeen point oh eight K O seven.
Ink pen refills. Um, it didn't quite come up with what we needed.
Wait, which one did you look at? This Kindred one that says BIC on it?
They're the same pen.
Oh, I guess they are. I don't see BIC anywhere.
Because I ordered those and then when I worked there, I ordered those.
That's no, you're right. I see BIC on it now.
Says BIC Korea. BIC. This really is a sick pen, like, mm, love these.
Let's move on.
Oh yeah, I gotta get registration tags. Okay, how to order new tags?
Shh.
Shh.
Well then, do you want this one back for to put your refill back in?
You keep it.
Okay. Do you send it along for that for those pens? Big fat refill.
What is that clicking on? Something's like grabbing my little hairs.
Your earrings?
No, it's like, oh, maybe it's my knuckles.
Still one of the knuckles. I didn't find anything for BIC fat refills.
I'll send you the link, just hold on. You're gonna order one for yourself?
Maybe if I bring the link.
Okay. That was so unnecessary. You're already using a free pen. Shut up.
Shut up and dance with me. You're like, um, can I have that pen back?
Yeah, I'm gonna need that back. Oh my gosh, I just saw a review that says, I'm delighted to have found these refills, especially in blue, to replace the refills for my BIC intensity click gel pens, which BIC does not make anymore. I love these pens, wish they hadn't discontinued them only to manufacture a cheaper version. Oh yeah, so if you see these, hang on to them, cause they don't make them anymore. You're never gonna get this again. What? That's a big deal.
It's like a mass-produced shitty company pen.
They don't make it anymore. It's not a shitty pen.
It's not shitty, but.
It's a two hu- two hundred, it's a two dollar and fifty cent pen. Like where would you pay two dollars and fifty cents for a pen? Where?
Anywhere.
Nowhere.
Anywhere you go, you can buy pens for three dollars.
That's expensive.
It is.
Yeah, it's expensive.
Don't throw this away.
You'll never be able to replace it. I'm such a sh- a shtick for that kind of stuff. Like, oh my gosh, you have to stock up, you're never gonna get it again. This is the thing you want. The blue colors like double the price. Why bother? Black's so much easier.
Yeah.
Cause you know I'm all about that base. All we do is.
Let's go to.
Paradise. Are you focused on your studies or not?
I have been. I just completed this equation determining that the change of entropy was positive when you have four point four six.
Ethropy or entropy?
In.
Tropie. Gotcha. Ooh, gotcha.
Entropy, I'm doing an entropy review. Cause delta S is equal to the number of moles times the R constant natural log times initial and final layers. The pain in the ass. I just had a pleasant.
Oops, sorry. Ah.
Ah.
Yeah, Lex has a new job and includes like chiropractor visits. Why don't you get on over there Captain?
Yeah.
And I think it's missing one screw on that side too, but that's not really an issue for me cause it doesn't like lean back in a like incorrectly. It's still fully even. It's in great condition. The arms are great. It's all great. It's just too loud. I need a new one that's not squeaky. I can't fix the squeak. Hi solitary, welcome. Marvin, welcome. Well, that's why I took I put I have to put the chat away or else I get too distracted. So I'll early start it and then I'll just pull up a different screen and do my homework. Okay fine, I'll go ready your movie. Yeah, you do that. Two alright, last session of the day. Finals in one and a half weeks. Study! Three, two, one, go. It's a race. How do we see who wins? Whoever gets into dental school first wins. Oh my god! That's like Hunger Games. This is it?
Yeah.
The seat doesn't look the same.
With flip up arms. That's exactly the chair.
The seat, does the seat look the same?
Yeah. Exactly.
It seems like a little wider. Like I got a fatter seat.
You will, you have a fatter seat.
Well, I like to sit crisscross too, so I like to put the arms up and then oh god, the tattoo. I didn't think that for-
Oh, I'm like you're so tight right now.
No, no, um yeah, and I'll sit well, I'll sit just like this all the time.
Crisscross applesauce?
Yeah, I was like
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cool.
This is my most comfortable way to stream. And if I have a chair that's like skinnier than
Yeah.
like a certain amount, I can't do that.
No, that's that's the chair.
Are you sure the seat's-
Look at the the back is the same, my arms are the same, the wheels are the same.
I know. Not just the wheel, we didn't look at the wheel. The wheels are the same. You need a new chair or just replacement piece? You know what? This isn't studying and this is horseshit, so do this later. On your own time. And that's that. It's also a hundred dollars. I'll put it on my list or I might myself. Of the things I can't have. That's all my wish list is. Hmm. Hmm.
Is that the time?
No, it's um a Twitch follow.
Oh, oh! Thank you!
I dropped my damn soda.
Did you spill through the cracks again?
No, but I spilled on my backpack. Aw, man! Oh my god, my back. My back is killing me.
What's wrong with you?
Aww! How are you? Aw, man, I got all of my backpack.
Oh, the raid, yes. The EX raid went great. Um... We got there just in time. We hopped in, we all caught Deoxys. Defense mode, which we had. I showed it off at the beginning, too.
Oh yeah, he has long arms.
He has long defense mode arms. Let me see if I can show you the two I have side by side. Yeah, so I've got this one with the swiggly arms. And then I've got this Deoxys with the big long arms. See any difference? This is the psychic one. Well, they're both psychic gingers, but this is defense mode. Yep, and we're done. So Cory showed up two minutes late. "Oh, the lobby's rough." She goes, "You gotta do lobby." And she weren't, they weren't gonna, they weren't gonna win, so she just had to cancel out the lobby. But apparently, oh, I texted her, apparently two or three more people showed up because they did get it.
I figured.
There's always stragglers, but like, I never wanna be a straggler, cuz like, there's been a time or two where there like, weren't enough people. But um, she like, went over the last minute, we were like, "We're already in, I'm sorry." These EX people don't mess around, dude. It's every minute, you gotta hop in or call your, call your shots, you know?
She came two minutes after I popped.
Yeah, she should've on time, basically, you know? And she pulled it apart on time. It's just... Those, those EX raid guys, if you're not there ten minutes early, fuck you, you know, like, you're under oath. Did my sexy man show himself today? Kissy face? No, Ginkgo, he didn't. But uh, he was in here with a polo shirt on, looking pretty good. You missed, you missed it. You brought me this monster. Don't worry, ladies, I'm here. Phew, what's up? What are you saying? "Hey, Orex Hunter, um, I'm doing chemistry problems right now." Phew, what's up, what are you saying, hey, Orex Hunter, um, I'm doing chemistry problems right now. I had to look up a lot of um data.
Like stuff.
I found some worksheets online I've been working through too.
Okay.
And um
Are your quizzes working for you or no?
They get confusing because it's like, a lot of yeah, they'll say like, oh, refer to this, this, and I'll be like, well shit, I believe you, cuz it, like, you know, like, it'll say
It's just all in order.
Right, right, but, so, so in the solution, it says, don't, you're like, so it has it here, you know, but like, I can't just look at this and know, I have to like, look through here, so I'm kinda like but like, I'm working through it, so it's good, like, it feels good, it looks good. I'm also just like, working through other um, similar problems in the same chapters. Yeah, I like them, they're cool, I like it. I'm getting through the material, I feel, like, I definitely need to review a lot of it, but the last three days of our schedule are literally like cam practice leftovers, cam practice leftovers, cram, like, I've got time to like, review that stuff. Sometimes I'm like punching through the chapters, yeah.
Totally.
And then
Tomorrow.
So tomorrow's a short evening.
Five, five to eight, mhm.
And then Tuesday's a longer midday.
Yeah, no, I, I'm committed, I'll make it happen.
I've got, I've got it right here, I wrote down the chapters, I wanted to do one it.
Nice. Good. That feels nice um, to be organized like that.
How was your forty-five hour CFT stream, really good? It went well, thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Oh, and then we did a chrysalia raid after that, and Alexa and Connor both caught their chrysalias, but I didn't, mine ran away, I suck. So I think I get a sh- a pretty chrysalia, but I'll get one later this week, I guess there's still another week for it, I didn't realize there were two weeks. You must like some folding dice shapes earlier.
Gotta do what you gotta do, man.
Rodrigo, this is fun, pen, I think it'd be very fun, you're doing it wrong. It's supposed to be sitting.
Not the idea here.
But you, good work team, we did it.
Yeah, we're supposed to start in the yawn for sure. Friggin' back, I, I do need to figure out, so I need to go
I can't believe you like, mess up your back so bad.
Well, I've never, I never had any problems with my back, and then, I think it was like, earlier this year when I hurt my back, do you remember that?
When you like, laid down on the ground? No, I don't remember.
You know what, I think it was actually like, a year and a half ago at this point, cuz I remember I worked with a different team, like, and I asked for the physical therapists.
I don't, I don't, I've never heard you complain of back problems.
Yeah, I, well, I didn't have any back problems, I was my car was in the shop, and so, I think that's why Connor took me to pick it up, cuz I had my work bag, my purse, everything, and I was holding
Oh, is that actually like, fell out of his car?
I was, I came out of my house going to his car.
I don't know what story this is.
Yeah, I had all my purses and bags in one hand, and I like, swung them around to like heft them, and like, all that weight, I think, and like, the twist, screwed it up. This is exactly like, what I did last time, so, i- it's like when you get older. Like, once you damage one thing, you damage it like, twenty more times, like his ankle.
No, when you get surgery like that, you're strengthened up though. Ask anybody. His doctor literally told him like, well, this is, at least you're probably never gonna break this ankle again, like, it's hella strong.
There are a lot of things that you are limited in though, because like, the screws are held into you know, for every area, there's a screw, there's less bone.
Yeah, the screws are stronger than bone.
But they have to hold, the bone has to be like, enough to hold on to the screw, like, the screw's holding on to the bone somehow.
Well, yeah, when he's seventy, his bones are deteriorating, he's gonna have problems with his ankle.
I know, they're telling Joel though, like, you can't, you're not gonna be able to do things that, like require more, like, more motion, there, it's not gonna be quite as flexible.
Well, that's just it, it's just flexibility, it's not like deterioration.
Stronger, but it's stiffer also, like, more prone to injury. Torcional injury, yeah, absolutely.
On the, I can, okay, I can
It's not depends.
See how
It's like, you get a total hip, like, sure, you're like, super strong and stable and stuff, but like, you're more likely to break that same one again, cuz the stuff around it's like, weak.
No, you're likely to break the thing around it.
Yeah, or like, if your knee's bad, you're more likely to get a bad knee again, that's what I feel like, at least, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
No, I mean, like, one, like, yes, if you continually damage the same part over and over again without getting it fixed, yes. You are weak.
That's not what I'm saying though.
You're saying, once you went in and had surgery, that it's weaker than it was before, that doesn't make any sense.
I'm saying like, you know, like, if you sprain your ankle, next time you sprain your ankle, it's gonna, like, it's gonna be that same one, cuz when you seriously damage something, it's, doesn't recover back to a hundred percent. It will recover, it's like, your phone battery life, every charge, like, makes it have a, it's like, less able
Then what's the argument where, like, when you like, get calluses on your feet, your skin is like, stronger and tougher, because you, like, you wear it down, so like, your feet overgrow, and that's what a callus is, is like, you, you've worn it down so much that they callus, so it's like, tougher. Like, what's that, and when you're, and when you have like, a broken bone, like, when your body is healing, it doesn't just grow back the bone, it, it surrounds the whole area with repair tissue. Like, what's that whole argument about repairs and injuries?
I don't know, I'm gonna Google it.
Cuz I've heard, I, I feel where you're coming from, I feel like I've heard that.
If you sprained your left ankle doing something, and then you're like, doing the same thing later, like, you're skiing again or something like that. The left one's gonna sprain easier than the right one. Cuz it's had damage, that's all, I, that's all I'm trying to say is like
At what point in the damage does your body overheal, at what point of
It's gonna keep screwing up now.
I feel like you can fix that though.
Yeah.
Feel like you could do something to make it stronger.
Yeah, totally.
Like, like surgery or, I don't know.
I just typed in easy to sprain it, it says like, easy ways to sprain your ankle, it's like, no, no, I don't wanna sprain the ankle, I'm just like Is it easy?
Opposite
Okay, what should you do?
My bone is stronger than the screw, that's a weird flex, ginkgo.
What should you do if you
Google strongest bone.
What would that be called? Back spasm, is that what that's called? Muscle back spasm?
Um, just ask
Treating lower back spasms.
If you, so have sustained an injury, are you more prone to injure that same site?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What
Oh.
How would you prevent that from recurring sustained injuries? Hey, this is cool.
Yeah, that's dope.
Okay, if you injure yourself is it going to be easier to injure again?
Back spasms, sudden and painful, but usually temporary and treatable. This is what I'm dealing with right now, honestly, honest to God, this is what I'm dealing with. Look at her, she's dealing with it too, ouch. Sharp sudden pain triggered by involuntary muscle contraction in your lower back. So painful, difficult to move, blah, 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 and then you fall down in the shower.
Yep, happened to me. How do you heal a sprained ankle overnight?
Oh my god.
A little bit of prayer, maybe, I don't know, fuck.
Apply an ice pack for fifteen to twenty minutes, three to four times a day.
Does spraining your ankle make it weaker?
I may not have like, a full-on spasm, because I'm like, still moving, it's kinda acting like, you're not gonna be able to do that.
Why does my ankle hurt months after spraining? It can take time to heal.
I also sprained my ankle when I was on vacation, remember?
Half of patients end up with an unstable ankle after an injury because certain ligaments do not heal correctly.
That's, that's what I'm, I, I think that hurts, that, that's what I'm
It's like several ankle sprains over the course of time can damage your ankle joint, if you're frequently doing it, talk to your doctor and see if they can so it's like, not, it's not like the same injury causes that to happen more often, but if you keep doing it, you're gonna damage.
That, well, that, okay, that's literally what I'm saying though.
Why does my ankle keep clicking? Googled that. Do sprained ankles ever fully heal? There we go, oh, well, that's a torn ligament, with marked instability that requires surgery. Fortunately, most sprains will heal within three to six weeks. Sepsians are those that continue to cause trouble, this is the sprained ankle that won't heal, let's look at that, I think this is where we're leading down this road.
Can you walk on a fr- can you go back to that?
No.
Can you walk on a fractured ankle?
Say that.
My foot was swollen for a good month, and I could only wear one pair of shoes to work every single day.
Literally just says, like, the reason people have reoccurring sprained ankles is because they don't do like, the appropriate care initially?
Yeah, like, strengthening and stuff.
Well, yeah, it's like, you're getting a sprained ankle because you're doing this, and like, they either don't stop it, or they don't take care of it when it happens, so it only partially heals, and then they just continue to batter on it until it sprains again. Hi, Tony.
I mean, yeah.
What were you wanting me to click on?
Can you walk on a fractured ankle?
Where does it say that?
But I just looked it up already. Oh, it changed, like, the suggested question searchings.
Oh, people also ask, I was like, what, why didn't you even see that?
But, the PT at my new job said about my ankle, he's like, wow, how is that still swollen, he goes, you probably fractured it, you need to go get an X-ray, and I'm like, well, I'm waiting on my health insurance to kick in.
Love to do that.
Seems like I need to take care of my body these days. Like, losing control.
I think in general, you, you, when Ryan Reynolds said that, he was, he was talking to, something was talking about like, doing his own stunts or something like that, and he was like, yeah, not anymore, like I'm not eighteen anymore, I'm not made of rubber and magic, you know, it's like, when you're like, super, you can bounce back from stuff hella fast, but
You know, like, babies can recover from neurological trauma? Exactly.
It's cuz their body is still like, imploding with cell growth.
You're using that word wrong.
Fine, their bodies are filled with
They're imploding.
Existential cell growth. The books are gone, hi Solitary, it's safe now.
Wait, didn't I have scissors in here?
You can't, yeah, they're right there, screw put in your leg, is it stronger?
Ooh, got it. I had another one over here, yeah. Lots of loose strings on this coat. Who did the sew job on this, terrible. Just kidding. Love this coat.
The heck? Images when you get a screw put in your leg. I'm pretty sure that's Connor's ankle X-ray, what's this doing, like, this is exactly what happened to him.
Did you sign a waiver to allow your information?
This is exactly what happened, this exact exact number of screws, and that's the exact length too, I'm pretty sure that's his exact X-ray, the fuck. I should've made a video, this could've been my cover photo, this is somebody's YouTube video cover photo. Pretty sure that's his ankle, like, ninety percent sure.
Oh, you'll need to take care as you'll be prone to spraining your ankle again in the first four to six weeks after recovery.
Ooh, okay, so recovery, and then another four to six, okay, well, that makes sense then.
You don't deal with the swelling, the area can't heal. Which is true, I did not, because I was walking everywhere and on vacation.
Yeah, you just specifically said, oh, I couldn't wear my, my shoes every day to work, like, you still worked every day and walked around every day on your feet?
On vacation?
Well, either way, you said, no, you said
It hurt, but I put them in the boot, and then I laced up, it was all the way over the ankle, so I had support and stuff, I laced the, the boot up all the way.
Listen, I'm not attacking you, you don't need to get defensive.
I'm not defensive, I'm just saying, while I was there and still walking, I did have a shoe that was kind of like, protective. And I could lace it up, even though it did hurt, but then when I got back, it just was painful to wear a boot every day to work, like a shoe, a, a winter boot.
Okay.
And it was too hot for that anyhow.
I still think a part of that is uh like, rest and recovery and elevation and icing.
Yeah, I'd go put ice on my back, friggin' hurts so bad.
I'm a fight boy.
Okay, let me see, how to treat, well, I just need to figure out what it is that's wrong with my back, things that can go wrong with your back.
Are we li- like, literally webending ourselves right now, like, this is only gonna end poorly.
Are you dealing with anything right now?
Literally, I'm not.
Let's Google it.
I'm fine.
My leg hurts. Reasons why your leg will hurt, you're blind, got a tattoo. Like, oh, oh, I figured it out.
Oh, figured it out. Yesterday, I tripped over my heater and like, ripped up my toe, but it, like, I know what, why that's happening.
Ouch, golly.
My back's been kinda hurting, but, you know, that's normal, whatever, for like, people who sit a lot, that's why I started doing like, back workouts.
Most often, I see, hey, you just riled over my strings.
Oh, these strings are those.
I clipped them off my, oh, got one more. Can you get ahold of me? Oh, I got it, it just like, rolled off, yeah. My whole jacket unravels.
I, right, I was like, maybe we
Most often, I see people who injure themselves during a weekend basketball, or a round of golf. These people think they're athletes. But they don't train like pros, and their backs suffer. Tackling those honeydew lists at home also sets you up for injury, cleaning out the garage, blah, blah, blah. The only preventive solution for ba- oh, where did that go, it just popped up, is exercise, oh, great.
See, I started doing a back strengthener, and laying your back on a hard floor.
Oh, get an inflatable exercise ball and sit on it. Oh, to engage your abs, but I bet it's like a, I bet, I bet I could lay on that ball to like, stretch my back out, don't you think?
That ball chair? Or, use it to engage your abs.
Is that ball chair still there?
Yeah, it's still yours.
Alright, cool, I'll take it back.
Tony, Tony handed me, said he'll rub some Bengay on your back for you.
That would, that would help so much, I bet you anything, or like, peppermint oil or something. I don't have Bengay.
Do some ab-engaging workouts on the ball.
Fine, I'll do some exercise, cut, you're gonna shame me into exercising.
It sounds like I do.
Well, I guess your back wouldn't hurt, I mean, you're just exercising a little more.
Just do some back workouts.
Don't move something that weighs more than twenty percent of your body weight.
See, the other day Ranger was here.
Twist or turn while lifting.
And I almost picked him up to put him in the tub, and then I said, nah, not worth it, sorry, major, get a sponge bath.
Then I said, nah.
Nah.
Alright.
You better get out of here.
I'm about done with this.
I'm about done with this too.
My laptop's dead too.
I'm starving, trying, trying to go.
Alright.
So? Thanks so much for hanging out, you guys, I got my Deoxys, she got her Deoxys and her chrysalia, four good hours, well four sessions.
Four sessions, I got a lot done today.
I blew through a We're packing on the first sessions, the first two sessions were super productive. Alright, see you guys tomorrow, for sure tomorrow. Good night.